Go ahead. He was detained. Good. We'd like to welcome you to the regular city council at seven o'clock on April thirtieth. And welcome to Santaquin City Hall. Glad to have you here tonight. We have a full council and so we'll dispense with the roll call and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask if anyone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Chad.
Chad?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not my fault.
Okay.
Our pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, being the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chad.
Yep.
Appreciate that. I would also like to ask if someone would like to offer an invocation or give us an inspirational thought. Mighty quiet.
Mayor, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to assemble as a city council and staff. We're grateful for Santaquin City and for the pleasant community it is to live in. We're grateful for our freedoms, for all that thou has blessed us with. Grateful for all the city employees and all that they do to make our community a pleasant place to live. We ask that thou would bless them and bless us as we meet together tonight in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate it. Art. I would like to start with the declaration of potential conflicts of interest. Are there any items of business that we will be discussing tonight that any of you have a potential of a conflict?
No.
Okay, well, good to go. And I would like to move a couple of things around. And I would like to put the employee of the month first on our agenda tonight. Are you going to do that, Ryan?
I was asked to, hopefully.
If you'll give that back to me, I've got some notes on it.
Nick, will you come forward, please?
You know, before you start, I think I was part of when he was hired. This is a great man. I am impressed with everything you've put into things, Nick, without a word being said. Thanks, Ryan.
So, mayor and council, that number just changed from the two ninety to two ninety-one. His wife is out on a call right now and not able to make it. So, our employee of twenty twenty-four, employee of the month, is Nick Cummings. Nick has been with the Santaquin Fire Department since two thousand and eight. Nick has been a staple to the department for many years and he is currently serving as a captain and has recently been tasked with becoming the fire training officer, which he does an amazing job. Nick grew up in Pleasant Grove and graduated from Pleasant Grove High School and moved his family to Santaquin in two thousand and seven. Nick and his wife Amber have four children, three boys and one daughter. They enjoy camping, riding their razors, yes, Nick, that's really what it is, riding their razors, hunting and cheering on their youngest who plays hockey. Nick works for the Pace and Power Plant as a mechanic and he's also a vital mechanic in the fire department. They welcomed their first grandchild to the family this past December, so yes, we can call him grandpa. Helping the community is the toughest situation and one of the reasons Nick finds fulfillment in working with the fire department. He enjoys the new task of being the training officer and is excited about the opportunities it will bring. He also loves working and spending time with more seasoned firefighters, AKA old ones, and is part of the Fire and EMS Association and enjoys participating in the Memorial Day breakfast. Most people don't realize that the Fire Association is separate from the fire department and they're the ones who now run and put this whole breakfast on. Nick has been the president of the association and I will say the ringleader of the circus to make it happen and does an amazing job. He spends a lot of hours behind the scene directing and coordinating and purchasing the food. And Nick, he's stellar at it and I really appreciate that. So, Nick will be recognized tonight and I wish his wife could be here. She can go back and watch the recording later and it'll just be a picture with him and his son. But I really appreciate Nick and all he does. He actually saves the city a lot of money helping as a diesel mechanic working on our apparatus. And when I know that Nick has touched it, I know it's done right and I don't have to worry and I really appreciate that. And I really enjoy having Nick on the department and he's actually my neighbor and one of my good friends and I really appreciate it. And I couldn't think of a better person to receive this award tonight. So, Nick Cummings.
Wait a minute. Are you gonna say anything?
No.
Mass evacuation.
Oh, thank you. We have an appointment to make tonight and I usually don't get in the middle of a whole bunch of things, but I do want to say this is amazing. And just shorter, about a year ago, I had a chance to meet Terry Giovanni Davis as she has been helping not only the city, but one of our past citizens. That is amazing, is one of her relatives. And she is a wonderful lady that has looked at our city in a whole new light and have an opportunity to enlist her skills, talents and love for a new city that she's kind of been a part of in the Historic Preservation Committee. And I know that this has with it some of the things that are a little bit of a challenge, but Terry is an incredible lady. And I knew that from the first moments that we met, but she has taken a big, big part in some of the real beauties I've seen of giving over the last year. And so, I think having her with her eye of what is good and what is bad and what adds to and builds a city is going to be a real benefit to us. And so, do we have an official statement that we were going to have for Terry or is this just me tonight?
It's just you and then Emily has a swearing in, a certificate for her to sign so that we can get that done?
Well, we'll do that, but I also need to raise this as a vote.
Uh huh, that's correct.
I would like to propose that Terry Giovanni Davis be placed upon the Historic Preservation Committee as one of the members. And she has met with John. John had flowing requirements, acknowledgements of how he felt. And I think the rest of us especially that have known Terry through this last couple of years has been impressed. So, I would like to ask for a motion to appoint her to this position.
So moved. I'll second that.
Moved, second, third, we've got it going. Travis?
I'll third it.
I take that as a yes.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
You're on. Emily, would you like to come in and swear at her? Or swear her in?
I'm just gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Terry Giovanni Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State.
The Constitution of the State.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Santaquin.
Of the city of Santaquin.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
That's it.
Now, you're really an alternate to the city council.
Would you like to say anything now that you've been sworn in and everything else?
I just want to say that I love the city. The first time I came to the city of Santaquin was nineteen sixty-five. Well, actually, I'm sorry, nineteen sixty-three. And my, my people are from Santaquin. Part of my heart lives in Santaquin and so I'm excited to be a part of the Historic Preservation Committee. I'm excited to try to find a way to use any talents that I do have to further any goals and visions associated with that committee. So, thank you very much for the appointment. I appreciate it.
Any talents that you do have?
Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
I do say I like to organize people and things to get stuff done, but I feel in this instance that whatever John wants me to do, I will gladly do.
I do want to say that Terry is the granddaughter of Judge Teigen.
Great-granddaughter.
Great-granddaughter. So, I remember the judge when I was a little guy. It makes me all done. What an incredible guy. He was well-loved and it's just good to have you. Thank you for accepting this. Appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to go back to the consent agenda and minutes, bills and items. We go through these one at a time. So, the minutes of the oh-two-oh-four-oh-two meeting for the city council. Are there any comments or corrections? Have you had a chance to look at them that you want to make any statements or changes from? Okay, next is the bills. City expenditures from March thirtieth to April twenty-sixth, the amount of one million five hundred and sixty-nine thousand thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Sheesh, that's a mouthful. Any questions on any of those review, any items? We did talk about these things in the work meeting too, which is on the previous video. Without any, I'll move on. There is an out-of-state training request from the fire department. Do you want to make a statement on that, Ryan? Chief?
So, this request is to send one member back to Minnesota to attend what we call Image Trend Connect. Image Trend is our Fire and EMS reporting software that we use. It's one that's nationwide used and the state of Utah uses it as their main database. This Image Trend Connect allows Lindsay to attend some classes to learn more about the backbone of programming and writing custom reports, which would have been really nice to pull the safer grant information instead of having to manually pull that. They do it once a year and every department that has sent somebody back says it's very beneficial. The class is actually in July twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, but we have to register her and book tickets. We actually have the money in this current budget year to pay for that and so it's come to you now to do that.
Okay, any questions? This is on the consent agenda, so if there are no questions, we're good to move on.
Perfect. I appreciate it. We'll work on getting her hotel and plane ticket booked.
Soon as we have the vote.
I know. Tomorrow. We still have to make a motion, but yes. And a vote. Thanks, Ryan.
All right, so those are the items that are on the consent agenda. I would ask first, are there any questions, anything that you need answered? Then I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
We've had a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Travis?
Yes.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on. Thank you. You can go ahead and get with them and move on, okay? There is a public hearing tonight on a budget amendment number two. We've gone over this recently and I need to open a hearing on this. So, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, do you want to address public forum first?
I don't know that we have anything on the public forum.
Well, I don't either, but it's on the agenda.
I have nobody that's signed up. Okay, we'll back up and we'll go into that. Generally, you sign up for it and we give you five minutes and that's, that's good. I didn't know, but at the first of the meeting, we picked that up. So, it was, it was handed to me to start the meeting and nobody was on it, so that's why I passed by. So, you're welcome. We'll move ahead with the public forum. If you have something that you would like to say, you've got five minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bruce Hayes. I'm a resident of Santaquin and I want to thank you all for doing a great job. We really appreciate this community and we know it's a lot of hard work to sit where you do, so it is, we're glad you're here, you're there. My concern is for this for right now is the cost of housing in Santaquin, not only just Santaquin, but in the, in the region. And I think it's worthy to explore some ways to mitigate that. I've been informed by the city, hopefully correctly, that the minimum, if someone's gonna build a house here in Santaquin, the minimum square footage is twelve hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Well, I can tell you that's not correct, especially if it was an ADU. I'm not sure about if there is a regulation that says it has to be twelve hundred.
So, there's, there's multiple areas of the code where this is addressed, so it's really hard to answer you specifically. In fact, just I think last meeting or the meeting before, we lowered the square footage of, of a certain, in a certain zone, we lowered the square footage. So, we are trying to make, you can go back and look, I think it was the last meeting and it was like March or April.
April third.
April third, we lowered the, but that's just one zone. So, I would be really cautious recognizing that each of the zones have different requirements, whether it's square footage, whether it's footprint, whether setbacks, those types of things. So, we, we've been trying to address it and in fact, we're very aware of the housing and the crunch and that kind of thing. We did that in an effort to try and help our moderate income housing plan for the state, which is a requirement for us. And so, we're, we're in line with that. We're, we're doing all that the state requires and I believe more, but please continue. But, but just as a blanket statement, twelve hundred square feet is not perfectly accurate because there's different zones that allow or require different things.
That may have been a general rule communicated earlier.
Could, could have been, yes.
Well, I'm a student in this area, so I, I know we go by a certain code, UBC or something like that.
I think it's the IBC.
IBC, okay, International Building Code. So, the IBC doesn't recognize straw bale as a rule, does it? I'm not aware that it does. And the only thing I want to communicate is that there's alternate building methods that if it were possible to have a wider scope of acceptance, saying IBC and other, there's earth chips, there's using tires, there is sandbag construction that's been shown to be very, very, has high integrity. There's other options that are more builder, owner-friendly. Those sorts of things, tiny homes. I'm not aware if we've ever done anything with tiny homes. Other communities have cordoned off or arranged for places to, to put tiny homes. A lot of people are getting out of debt by going tiny. It works for, it works for everybody. I can tell you it wouldn't work for my wife, but it does work for everybody, a lot of people. And I guess as a citizen, I'm simply advocating for options, creating options for lower-cost housing. But most of us, if not all of us, have kids. The, my daughter and her husband, basically when we were trying to get them to move to Utah, they basically said, fat chance, no way. It's just way too expensive out there. And I don't think it necessarily has to be that way. I think there's some options we could do in our community to help our kids stay nearby and I think that's important to most people. So, thank you for hearing me out.
I just want to say one thing and that is over the last year or two, we've been working on this thing called an ADU, which is an auxiliary dwelling unit.
Oh, I've heard of it.
That fits within our ten and our eight zones that we have specified throughout the town. And if the lots capable of handling it, there's actually a tiny home or an ADU, an auxiliary dwelling unit that has been on the books and able for people to come in and build a tiny home. Well, it's what, eight hundred square feet, something like that.
Yeah.
And right on the same lot without breaking off others, there are tax advantages, there's all kinds of advantages. And in fact, on Thursday night, there is a class that Jason is hosting that will be going over how to do this, how to use it, how to actually add to homes and lots, something along the very same line, I think, that you're talking about. And that will be seven o'clock in the, in the large room and Thursday night.
Yeah, so mayor, just to expand on that, so it's Thursday at six o'clock. It's an open house where we're going to be providing a lot of education about what an accessory dwelling unit is, both attached and detached. And we're gonna have a lot of local professionals there, financial institutions, real estate agents and even some contractors that if you'd like to ask questions and explore more. Basically, it's an open house casual setting where we just want to help educate the public about what that particular residential use could mean for Santaquin residents.
I think that would be very valuable to, to attend. I appreciate you letting me know that. Is that the May second?
And if you wait here for a few minutes afterwards, I'll print you off an invitation. We sent six hundred and fifty-somewhat invitations to residents that live in the zones that qualify.
Six hundred and forty-nine.
Something like that.
Art would like to speak with you about that.
So, when you send that many invitations out, there's bound to be a few that forget to get the invitation put in the envelope. So, yeah, there's about ten or so and one of our council members was one of those. So, but if you wait here, I'll, I'll get you an invitation so that you have all the information and you can expect, you can see what to expect in attending that, that open house.
That would be very good. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comments. I do want you to know we're working on all of these things as best we can to fit into line with what the state has actually asked us to do because they're holding the hammer over our head on these things. They are things that we have to comply with, but we don't build. What we do is try to make it so that people can build and we're trying to do the best that we can that way. So, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hayes. Did you want to comment? Okay.
And I would encourage you to invite others, help others to understand what's happening. Invite them to come and be a part of that presentation as well. We would love to have just a great turnout there.
Thank you. Okay, we ready to move on to the open house for the public forum?
The mayor's looking forward to it as well.
The open house is Thursday, mayor.
I need to go golfing one day. I want to hit a ball really hard. Okay, a public hearing on the budget amendment. The budget amendment is every few months, we have to get together to rebalance everything that's actually happened because money's come in when money's come in and so do costs and little changes. So, that's really what this mounts to. So, I would like to have a motion to open a public hearing. So moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aye.
Lynn? Took a minute. Sorry. Travis?
Aye.
All right, we have a public hearing open for the review, discussion, comments from the public on the budget amendment that we need to go over. So, we are open at this point. If anyone, it has been published, it's been on websites and other places. Seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion to close that public hearing. So moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Good. Let's go into item number six, which is actually the review of that which has been posted, the...
So, item number six was the public hearing, so we'll get to that coming up next, but next will be your building permit report.
All right.
Yeah, so mayor and council, Norm's pulling up the report there. We're up to a hundred, one hundred and eleven residential dwelling units for the current calendar year. That's, that's in relation to fifty-one that we had last calendar year at this time. That's an increase of twenty-seven new residential dwelling permits since I last gave this report at the last council meeting, which was on April second. As you can see with the fiscal year, we're up to two hundred and nine in relation to a hundred and one where we were at this time of year, last fiscal year. And I guess I should say we have four new commercial spaces as well in this fiscal year and one new commercial space in this calendar year. And then for new businesses, there's the four new business licenses we've, we've approved that are on the screen and all four of them are home occupation. So, happy to answer, answer any questions you have about building permits or business licenses.
Hearing none. We'll move on. We'll get to that budget amendment here in another one. So, on the resolutions, the municipal wastewater planning program report. Do we have, was Jason gonna come here?
He's not gonna be here tonight. I can take care of it, mayor.
Okay.
So, mayor and council, just like our water reporting that we do for our drinking water, we have a wastewater report that we have to submit to the state. This is a formal report that basically just indicates to the state where we're at, what we've done, helping them to understand that we're in compliance with the, with the wastewater permits that we have in place for mostly for our water reclamation facility, but also for our collection facilities. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. If you have any, the best that I can. But it's a, it's a pretty simple thing. Did we not get the attachment in there, Emily?
No, it's just up above it. I think he...
Oh, it's four before. Okay, sorry. Let me, let me get to the front of that and then we can take a look at it and see what we think. If I can get to the top. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions. There are a lot of specifics in here about how much we treat, making sure that we have a landfill permit and approved by the state, those types of things. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any on those.
I have a quick question. I saw that, I think it's every seven or ten years, we're checking lines versus every two years is what the question was. Is that, is that like pretty standard? I mean, is that like a common exception based on the explanation that was given in the report?
Yeah, so we, we have, we have really two fronts. When we talk about our system, you're talking about our collection system. We have, for lack of a better term, it's a sewer rat is what they call it. It's, it's an acronym, R-E-T-T. I don't remember what it stands for, but essentially, we put those down in, in manholes, especially in our problem areas of town where we might have lower slopes, where we might have grease problems, where we might have blockages, those types of things. We put those down in our manholes at a frequent basis. And then about once every eight or ten years, we actually clean every, so we rotate through town, but every segment of pipe that we have for sewer collection gets pressure washed and cleaned and inspected on a very regular basis and that helps us to be able to stay in compliance for both the state requirements and for our insurance as well. Again, we kind of have some hotspots where there's lines that are flatter, they tend to build up grease more, they, they tend to end up having more blockages. So, those areas that are hotspots, we do those quite, quite a bit more frequently. But if we have a system that's flowing and we can inspect it every eight or ten years with a, with a power washer and flush it, it, it really is something that really benefits us. with a, with a power washer and flush it, it, it really is something that really benefits us to not have those costs. So, several years ago, we used to, we used to do about a fourth of the system every year to the tune of, I think about eighty or a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, some of that was probably not needing to be done, but it was just the system that was in place. We've gone to two other systems now where we do cleaning on some of it, but also inspection on others, just to make sure that we're in place in, in line with the code. So, that is pretty standard for the type of setup that we have, yes.
And then I just have another question, just curious. I, I saw that comment about grease in the lift stations. Is that causing like a lot of excess wear and tear? Or like, what's the like impact of that? And, and I saw that, that there's like work with the businesses. I also was just wondering, like, what does that look like?
So, grease is an interesting problem for, for city municipal systems. Most of the grease that we get into the system typically comes more from homes, but some of it does come from restaurants or car washes or other things like that. Most commercial businesses, if they are a restaurant or they're, they're a car washer, they are a high water user, they have what's called a grease interceptor outside their system before it hits our system. And so, that really causes them more issues than what we have. But we do get some of that in our system. Like I say, in a, in a lower flow, a flatter pipe where there's less velocity of, of the flow, then that grease can start to line the sides of the pipe and make it so that it slows things down and clogs things up. It, it is a problem, and it's going to always be a problem. It just is a matter of what we deal with. It can do everything from blinding our screens. We have some two millimeter screens that are, that we get all the grit and sand and dirt and everything out of the stuff before it goes into the, the, the flow, before it goes into the water reclamation facility. But grease is always going to be a problem. We, we try to do, work with the businesses to help them with their systems that all in turn helps us with ours. We also, once or twice a year, we'll put a, a notice out in our, in our newsletter that just says, hey, don't put grease down the, the sinks. It causes a lot more problems for homes than it does for us. But when you combine all of that together, and there's some low points or some areas that are lower flows, that can cause problems for us as well. That's kind of the hotspots that I'm talking about. That, that can be in the pump station, it can be in the lines that are flatter, it can be in the, in the pumps themselves. It just is, it's always going to be a problem, but we try to minimize it as much as we can.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions on this? I know we go through it every year. It's usually when everybody leaves when you start talking about crap, but you know. Glad everybody stayed today, good to have you. You've now gotten through the cheery section tonight. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolutional four oh two, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Motion passed, let's go on to Resolutional four oh three, the approval of budget amendment number two. This is where I started a couple of minutes ago, and I was interrupted to where I couldn't go there without doing the other things first. So, now we're there. We've all gone through this. These are the adjustments that need to be made to balance the budget. We, we actually balance our budget as we get started. We make a change a few months in as things differ a little bit. We made a change, last change in November, I think, was the last one?
November, December, I believe, yeah.
Somewhere in there.
So, this is budget amendment number two.
And so, this is, this is kind of the last one before we get to the end of the year.
Yeah.
And, and we're kind of bringing everything up. We've had a few things that have changed, but nothing drastic.
And we have our finance director with us here tonight to help us if you have questions or thoughts or concerns on what we've gone over, what you're looking at.
Yeah, you've all, you've all had a chance to see this. It was published, not only that, we had this, this part of that last work meeting. So, any questions for Shannon? Are we good? Then I would entertain a motion to accept this resolution.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, we're, we now have a balanced budget. Thank you, Shannon. Appreciate you for balancing everything.
If, if I may say, Mayor, this has been, again, a gargantuan effort. She's worked with, with all of our directors and all departments, everything from capital facilities to vehicles, to, to operational budgets, to wages, to everything else. And it is just a huge task, and I appreciate all that she's done there to, to put that together. It has really been, I, I really actually appreciate her, her cheeriness when I come in her office and she probably rolls her eyes in the back of her head going, oh, great, here's another change, because I, I did that just today. So, to the, to the tentative budget moving forward for next year. But just so you know, it is, this is, again, an opportunity for us to say, okay, we've had some more revenues, but we also now have some different look at expenditures, and, and we have actuals now three quarters of the way through the year. This is where we're at. We'll have one more budget amendment come before you at the time that, towards the end of the year, some last couple of days of June, to just tidy up the budget, make sure that we're good at the end of the year so that we don't have any audit concerns.
You know what, thank you for everything.
Appreciate it.
Over the last couple of years, you have moved this a long ways. We, we have incredible control over our finances, the look, the anticipation, the planning. And it really is something that falls on your shoulders. And I appreciate all the time that you put in. Thank you, Shannon. It's been fun.
Appreciate you, guys.
Okay, that's approved, we can move on.
Yep.
Ratification of the resolution for the architectural design service contract, CRS A. Don't we need to, oh, no, this is the one we can approve through here because we approved this in the CDRA.
So, yeah, this is a, this has been already approved, the, the funding and the contract has already been approved, but you didn't see the actual agreement that was lacking in the last budget or the last council meeting that we had. I apologize, we were still, that was still a work in progress. This just formalizes everything and ratifies it so that we can move forward with this contract and actually have the mayor ink the contract. Happy to answer any questions?
So, so I would like to make a statement at this point. That's more than just, oh, this is a ratification of a resolution. And, and I just want to say that over the past couple of years, we've worked pretty hard to come up with extra funds to be able to find a pathway to build our library that is the whole west wing of this building, which is vacant right now. And we went before some committees, we went to Capitol Hill. We made a presentation to a lot of senators and congress or house representatives, kind of at the spur of the moment, off the cuff, and I think we did a fantastic job. But that's only because it was Norm and I, and we had to do it at that point. Any of the rest of you probably would have done a lot better, but at least in my book. But you know what, it had me realizing that as we were looking for a little over two million dollars to do this, that it, wouldn't it be interesting if they actually gave us this money? And the thought occurred to me, we don't have the plans done. We have got to get the plans done and this building ready so that when we do find, have this funding, we can move forward. And we decided to utilize some of those funds, and we are now getting this done. This is the contract to turn the architect loose and have this building ready when we find this funding, which will be as soon as possible. And leave no stone unturned, so. Have you all reviewed this contract? Are there any questions that you might have? I know we've talked about it. We good to go? I would entertain a motion, then we approve this contract.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Good. I probably talked too long there, we could have got that done a whole lot quicker. We have a discussion and a possible action on the community services use of, of surplus funds that came through, and it wasn't quite two point two million dollars. And so, we have to look at this in a different light. It's actually money that came in because we sold a few of the old items that were inside of the kitchen area of the old senior citizens building. They weren't necessarily even antique, they were more out, I don't know, maybe not. But they did move them. Anything that you would like to go over with, Norm?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is just some extra revenue that has come in and some possible places where we could put that revenue for the community services department on a, a portion of a trailer, replacing the, the tires on the fun bus, the, the larger bus that we have for the community services department, and then also for an, an e-bike for trail maintenance. We found actually this week, that would have been, yesterday, that, that would have been really helpful. So, it's, they're constantly doing maintenance and stuff up on those trails, and this would just make it so that we don't have to ride a, a regular bike, or we could put a shovel on the back, or we could take something with us to be able to, to help maintain those trails better. So, we, we would recommend that you approve the, just the seventy-three hundred dollars for them to spend on these purposes and, and moving forward so that they can get that done.
Any questions? Was there more money than that, or is that the total amount?
It was pretty close to that.
Six dollars and fifty cents, it says.
Yeah.
There was a little bit more for the sale of some of the things that they became from the fire department. There's only about two hundred and fifty dollars more. But the majority of things were sold from the seniors.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Then I would entertain a motion that we go ahead and approve that.
So moved.
I'll second it. Okay, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, and we'll move forward. Home daycare business code amendment, this is something that trickled down from the state. Do you want to go over that?
Yeah, so there was some legislation, I believe, that was passed in two thousand twenty-two, HB fifteen. And basically, this is, this is a cleanup amendment of, of, of some provisions in our code related to family group daycares. There is one part of this that really came from our, our senior planner, Ryan Harris, is, is something that he, he saw in some other communities that he worked closely with that, that has been helpful. And that is basically at a requirement that when two preschool sessions are held in one day, there, there will be a minimum thirty-minute break between each of them. And the reason, purpose for that is, is you have parents coming to pick up their daycare kids and, and parents that are, are coming to drop their kids off. You don't get all that traffic all at once, so having that thirty-minute break really helps. And he's seen that be a success in other communities without a lot of pushback from the daycare folks. So, yeah, the, the ordinance is there, and, and, you know, I think the council has hopefully been able to review that. And yeah, I'll leave it at that unless you have any questions.
Okay, well, was there, were, were there any of the daycare facilities that had any comments or concerns about anything that lies within it?
No, this was kind of brought to light with the, a recent daycare proposal that we had, which, which went through more of an administrative process. And that's partly what the state code is, is making it more of an administrative process instead of it going through a formal, you know, planning commission review sort of a thing. So, that's, that's the, the gist of, of what a lot of the language in here is doing is, is just bringing that administrative review process in line with the, the state legislation that, that required that.
Okay, are there any questions or concerns, anything you want to bring up at this point? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve that change in the ordinance, so four oh three, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
I had a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're going to convene into the Santaquin's CDRA so that we can conduct some business that has to do with the purchase agreement that the city does within the industrial park that we control through the CDRA. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from this meeting to the Santaquin's CDRA.
So moved.
Moved and seconded?
Second.
Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Now, you will notice that we're a board, we're no longer a city council for a few minutes. I'm the chairman of the board, and each of these members are board members with a vote that they have, and I have none. This has to do with any time that we deal with purchase of, selling, buying ground, or dealing with contracts that we might write within the CDRA. And it only applies within a prescribed boundary that the city owns. We have done this with the industrial park. Santaquin City owns the industrial park, and we have also controlled all the sales that we've done to this point. Tonight's question, or tonight's resolution has to do with the C.C. Callaway purchase that they did a few months back. And we found that we had an issue on the architectural requirements of the contract and wanted to deal with it so that it was a little more clear and easy to deal with, with the buyers that we have, as well as the potential buyers for a few of the pieces of property. So, with that, do you want to go over those changes?
So, Mayor and Council, there's four parts to this amendment. The first part is, you may remember that, that there's an eleven-foot strip on two sides of this C.C. Callaway property that would have been a, a sidewalk and mow strip, a park strip, that are not needed by the city. This is not necessarily a walkable residential community, which is kind of how we based our roadway cross-section. So, this allows them to use that eleven feet. We still maintain it in fee title and ownership, it's ours. But it allows them to use it for landscaping purposes and, and makes it so that they can count that towards their site landscaping requirements. The same thing goes for the area up on the front of the property that fronts Summit Ridge Parkway. They are, they, they would be willing to participate with the first five feet of that trail segment that's there. You, you, you may recognize some of the trail segments that we have on the east side and other areas of town where we have a meandering trail, we have a rocks, a, a rock and cobble, we have some trees and shrubs in there, those types of things. That's what this would look like, but they would participate in that five foot up front that would allow them a couple of things. They can overhang their cars and have a little bit shorter, their parking, and have a little bit shorter parking stall by two feet because we give them a little bit of an overhang. They can also use it as part of their landscaping for their site plan. That would be our property, and again, still stays with us, but it allows them to be able to use it and help participate in the cost of that. That's number two. Number three is, is three and four basically covering one thing, and that is adding some materials. This, this particular item number three adds this pref, or sorry. Sorry, let me get to it. Decorative metal siding products that we'll show in the picture here in just a minute, that adds that to the list of what we call primary materials to help them meet the, the building requirements that are there. And then also changing the, the, or adding Exhibit C in the agreement that allows them to have a different type of building. And this is the building type, I'll, I'll show that here so you can see that. This is the building type that they would like to add. Again, we, we talked about this a little bit in the work session, and that, that some of the designs or some of the concepts, I guess is the better way to put it, that they put, that they suggested in their agreement, just aren't penciling out for them to be able to have a, a viable building there for their business. And so, this gives them an opportunity to still have a relatively good-looking building. It still has, this building has plenty of frontage. Again, this is a, this is a three or four-foot wide stucco texture type steel insulated panel. It looks like stucco, the, the joints of the panel, they're not raised, they're just a joint together, and it makes it look like stucco joints. If you've seen stucco before, they typically break it up and have different segments. And then you've got some hardy board and some, some other maple wood siding that is here, and then some decorative metal siding. These decorative metal panels, the darker vertical ones, are the ones that are being added to this building and, and for them to be able to meet the requirements of the, of the agreement. And that, that's essentially where we're at. Again, I, I apologize, this, this makes it look like it's pink, it's not. The lighter color, the main body of the building here would be a light gray, again, with the stucco texture that makes it, gives it some definition and some, and then the panels where they come together makes it look like they have stucco joints. So, happy to answer any questions that you have about that or any other item in the amendment.
Sound good? I know we went over this in the earlier meeting. Without any questions, then I would ask for approval of this resolution. So moved. Okay, there's a motion.
I'll second that.
And seconded. Board member Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes. I would also like to ask for a motion to return, to leave this meeting and return to the city council. So moved. Is there a second? Then seconded, board member Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, you're counseling again. Congratulations. I'd like to go into reports. Jason, would you like to go first?
Sure. So as we already talked about in the public forum and as brought up by, by some residents, this Thursday, May second, at six P.M., we'll have the accessory dwelling unit open house just here in our multipurpose room on the south end of the building. That's open to the public. Like I said, we, we sent out six hundred and fifty or so individual invitations. Unfortunately, a few of those envelopes forgot to have the invitation placed in there. So we've had some residents call and say, I got this envelope from the city, but it has nothing in it. So luckily, they, they reached out to us and we helped them understand why they were getting that. So we did post it to Facebook as well and we hope people will come and, and be educated about ADUs. After this open house is done, we, we will be in a spot where we can start writing our moderate income housing report to the state. And so Ryan Harris and I will, will start doing that and we'll get feedback from the program manager at the state. And we'll, we'll be in a great spot to, to get this report in and be in compliance before the August first deadline. So, so yeah, we, we have this event from six to seven, but frankly, we're happy to stay till eight, as late as eight. If, depending on how many people come and have questions. And so I think it'll be a good event for, for the public and for some of our local professionals that will also be learning about what the regulations are for ADUs. One of our goals with this is, is not just to educate and talk, but to receive feedback from the public that, that may bring to light some things that make it hard for them to implement one of these on their, their qualified property. One of the things we're, we're going to be doing this week and hopefully having close in a couple of weeks is we're going to post for the planner one job again. We did this in, just before Thanksgiving and I think we had some great candidates. We made two or three offers and they all denied it. So we, we felt like, you know, we wanted to wait until kind of the end of the semester and we've kind of looked at university schedules for finals and, and yeah, the first part I made is really kind of the, the sweet spot to, to maybe get some candidates that are just graduating and might be interested in finding a, a job. So hopefully we'll get a, a good pool and, and we worked with them last time, but I'll, I'll coordinate with councilmember Sideway if that's all right to be included on those, those interviews. I think council probably got, we have an employee luncheon tomorrow that if you guys are able to attend would be great. And, and just a heads up to you, in May, we have kind of a tradition of doing an employee luncheon and event for our employees to get out of the office and, and help plant all the flowers on, on Main Street and the boxes and in the, and in the Minor Nelson Plaza there on the corner with the clock tower. So you can look for an email of when that date will be specifically. I've been working with Jason Callaway to, to see what the best time is to do that. But we're looking forward to in May beautifying our Main Street and getting that done and giving our employees an opportunity to get out and do something different. Let's see, I think, I think that's probably it for me, at least that I can think of right now.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, we were reported on the water in the, in the previous meeting where about two-thirds of the water's come down off the hill, which is good. And haven't had significant flooding or any challenges that way, so that's been good. I would report that as you probably have seen, Main Street has torn up pretty good at this point in time. They're, they're making headway with trying to get all the utilities in on the south side of the road to get those power poles out of the way. That's a key move for us to get that all done and get Rocky Mountain Power Poles out of the way. All that power will be going underground. That's a significant cost to the project, but it will also help beautify Main Street, just like it is down to the west, to the east, I mean. They, if they haven't already, I didn't look today, but if they haven't already, they will be starting on the north side at two hundred east to start doing demo. Meaning plant sidewalks and other things that are behind the curb and gutter. Same as what they've done on the south side, there will be some dry utilities going in up there, but not as extensively as what's on the south side. There'll still be gas and, and streetlight conduits, but not the big conduits like they've been doing for the power on the south side. That will start this week and then also I believe this week, they will be starting to actually put new sidewalk in starting at two hundred east on the south side and moving to the west. So in the next couple of weeks, at least all the sidewalks in front of those buildings and the residences will be tied back in and will be, they'll still have a gap between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter because the curb and gutter still has to come out, storm drain has to go in. But, but it will still give us a pedestrian-friendlyer walk to and from the homes and the businesses. So in the next couple of weeks, that south side sidewalk should be complete or nearly complete to, to get folks to those residences and businesses. And then kind of similar, what's happening on the south side will happen on the north side. They'll start demoing as soon as they can demo up there and the, and the dry utilities go in. They'll come back on three hundred east and start with the curb and gutter and the storm drain and all that kind of stuff more out in the, in the roadway than in the sidewalk section. So things are progressing, they're doing a great job. We really appreciate Landmark and the, the work that they're doing. They have been really good to coordinate with homeowners and businesses to, to help them understand what's going on and what they, what, you know, what they can expect. And I, I think they've done a fairly good job of that. They have a public involvement firm that they've had helping them with that and they go knock on doors regularly and, and help just to give updates. You can also see updates on our website and on our Facebook pages. Those are posted as more information is available. They're, they're not daily or even weekly. I think it's been a couple of weeks and we just barely reposted one this week or late last week to just kind of update, let folks know where we're at. So that's moving forward. Also, last week, we had the Central Utah Water Project have the, the open house here at the building. We didn't have a great turnout for that, but it's just one of those things that they wanted to do and needed to do to try and get public information out there. They will be starting somewhere around June, or May first, I'm sorry, in the cul-de-sac up on eight hundred north and, and four fifty west, or three fifty west and four twenty west. They've actually already started in that area relocating utilities. But shortly, they will be starting to, to bring in large five-foot diameter pipes that'll be put in the ground and, and bringing in our water to us, so that's good. Happy to answer any questions. There's still development work going on in, in different subdivisions in the, in the city. And so those will be, some of those will be paving in the next little while, including our subdivision out here for the industrial park. Portions of that will be curb and guttered and paved here in the next few weeks, month and a half or so to, towards the south end. And then there's still going to be some fill-in as we continue to sell lots and, and get things taken care of for those that we have contracts with. Happy to answer any questions that you have about any of that.
Okay.
Ryan?
One, I wanted to say we had a really good art festival despite the weather. Obviously, it was a, that affected some attendance, but I thought it was really great and there were really great people that participated. And I'm really appreciative of our Community Services Department. In addition to the art festival, I think this last, this is the last week of the youth soccer. And I know just myself with my daughter and so many neighbors of how fortunate we are to have such a good youth soccer program. That also is one of the rare youth soccer programs that allows a younger age. And neighboring towns like Payson don't do that. So I just wanted to, you know, give some appreciation to them for all that they do. There's another thing. John Bradley sent this over for our Healthy Santaquin Grant. There's been a lot of work that's happened this year. I think one of the things that I think is really impactful is translation of the community services information to Spanish language. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking residents who are amazing. And so I think it's, it's been really great. I know it's more work, but I think that's been really appreciated. There's, there's a lot of other things. I'll just throw some out there of obviously the translations, there's Exploring Your Parks campaign that they're doing. Distributing healthy snacks and bilingual information at Ivanov's Grocery Store. There's quite a bit of stuff. And so they're doing a lot with that. The Healthy Santaquin Grant, I think it was fifteen thousand, right, is what was awarded. And there's, they've really stretched that to go a long ways. Only other thing is I just want to say, we haven't had a city council meeting since, but it was really great to go out to ULCT with everybody. I, I really appreciate being associated with such good people, so thanks.
Thank you. Art?
Well, several things, several things have been mentioned already, but I'll, I'll repeat them. I did go to the CUP Open House. For some reason, I had in my mind that the pipe was thirty inches. And I found out that it's five feet, it's sixty inches. That's a big pipe. And, but it was very informative. It was nice to meet those folks and, and watch them interact with, with one another mostly. Along with Brian, the ULCT conference was great. Noel Pike, Pike's Pace was absolutely amazing. She's a, a medal winner in the sport of skeleton and I thought that was something I kept in my closet and it's not. It's a, it's a something she lays on face down. That weighs sixty-five pounds and it goes seventy to ninety mile an hour, experiencing five or six Gs as she goes through turns. Absolutely amazing. The Olympics are coming to Utah. I predict, I might not be here to see them, but that's okay. But support the Olympics, but it was a good conference. I do have a question about the planter boxes. You mentioned that there's a city activity to plant, planter boxes, but only around the clock. We're not doing anything with the ones on Main Street because they're being removed, correct?
Nope, the ones on Main Street are not being removed. The, the Main Street widening project, we're not building additional planter boxes, but the ones that are there existing, yeah, we, we still plant those and, and.
After the widening's done, they'll still be there?
Uh huh, because that, that part where the boxes are at, the widening's already been done there.
Good. I appreciate Public Works and all that they do to make our city work and the water run and, and the water run away. And take care of our community and make it look so, so nice. It's a busy, busy job this time of year. I know what my yard's doing. I can only imagine what all the city property's doing.
It's about ninety acres, just so you're aware. And that doesn't include the, the mountain bike park. So if you can imagine mowing and trimming ninety acres, that's what they do weekly.
I have one, it takes me two hours. Thank you. And like Brian said, it was good to be together as a, as a council and a mayor and it's good to associate with great people.
Yeah, that's good. Jeff?
I was just going to bring up the art festival that that's already been done on. Looked like it went really well. Yeah, that's it.
And, and your son was in the plein air, right?
He did not submit. Maybe next year.
Sorry to call him out.
Okay, Lynn?
Yeah, I'd just say ditto to what everybody said about the conference we went to in St. George. I appreciated, this, the discussions, that the state is paying attention a lot more to, to what cities need. It's interesting you brought up the affordable housing here in Santaquin, Mr. Hayes. They, the state's concerned because we keep telling them there is no such thing as affordable housing right now. And they're, they're working on it, we're working on it, but there's no easy solution for that. But there are options, so we're, we're looking at that. They talked about water and the Great Salt Lake and so many things that were just really informative to us as a city. So appreciate being able to go and be with good people. Thanks.
Travis?
I don't want to kick a dead horse about ULCT, but never thought I'd sit in a conference about water and be entertained by it. But I did. So we had a library board meeting recently. Kudos to the people over at the library, they do a great job. They've got summer events planned, book clubs for all ages. Their, their plan's in the works to kick off the summer reading with the movie. They're going to do Up this year. So that's, that'll be a good one. I met with the YCC Youth City Council. They actually went through, changed their charter a little bit. They want to start including kids just at a little bit younger age to try and get kids hooked and more excited about it. So that when they get into high school, they're already been participating for years rather than trying to find the time to do that. So they made some really good changes and they've got some plans coming up. Hopefully, we'll see them in here in June. So they're doing a lot of good things over there. It's a great program. So.
Okay, thank you. I, I just have a few things. We need to check with Brandon on that, that county line. We, we ought to get that done really, really quick, okay? I wanted to mention that Santaquin Canyon has been underway. They've also had a little setback with all the high water that's come down the last couple of weeks and it's kind of stopped them for a couple of weeks. However, they were able to work around it and they've been working on some other things. So our work on opening up the canyon after eight years is still moving forward. We anticipate Santaquin Canyon by late or in the fall, which we will tell you the moment that it's open. And you can find me up there at any point. This past week, the county and our Public Works worked together and put in a new head gate along the flood channel, which now is allow, allows a little control of any of the high water that goes westward out of the channel to be controlled with a screw-down head gate that turns it through the old gravelly wash that leads to the pipe that goes under the freeway at the south exit. So both, the county took the lead, they're the ones that directed most of that and they poured concrete, put a head gate in. So I haven't gone and looked at the last piece of it. Have you, Norm? We probably ought to take a ride up and give them a nod or something. John let me know the Skills Park is still underway. It looks like they're going to start towards the end of June and first of July, somewhere right in there. Hopefully, we'll see that come to be. And a whole bunch of new activity going on up in the Skills Park. Of course, it's going on every day. For your information, I have been in touch with the U.S. Forest Service and the state, as has John. We will be meeting with the state and the Forest Service on our trails, our ties to Bonneville Shoreline and an addition of another six miles that are now been taped and, and mapped, but it hasn't been dug yet. My machine's sitting there breathing hard, ready to go, I guess. And I did want to make one note here that I think, you know, over a century and a half of inhabitants of Santaquin, rarely did we put water into the Great Salt Lake via Utah Lake. Mainly because it hardly ever reached the lake. Most of the time, all of the farmers let everything they could settle everywhere. And we had other channels that ran throughout town that there was a series of ponds that actually went through from Fourth South and Center Street to the dump area when I was a kid. Those days are gone, so we've had to find other ways to move water. And since the first of February till now, and it's still running to now, I think we're running somewhere around thirty to sixty second feet of water that has gone to the Great Salt Lake. And that's Santaquin's contribution to keeping the Great Salt Lake a lake. And hopefully, that's going to help us in the future if we need to petition them to help us to create a real channel with pipe that we can control and keep water out of people's basements. So we will continue to work on that. Lot of other good things going, businesses being contacted, work with UDOT. Lot of other good things going, businesses being contacted, uh, work with UDOT. UDOT is still working feverishly on our environmental assessment for the replacement of the interchange on Main Street. We've still got a ways to go, but, uh, we are making headway. Love this city. Um, I'm grateful for everything that you guys have done. Going to, uh, St. George's last week was a real good conference. It's good to learn and to work with the people that we are entrusted to serve and serve with. Last thing on this agenda tonight is, uh, we will not adjourn this meeting at this point, but we will adjourn to an executive session where we will be discussing pending a reasonable imminent, imminent, imminent litigation and/or purchase, exchange, or lease of real property. So I would, uh, make a mo-, or ask for a motion to adjourn to an executive session.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
It's eight twelve, we'll adjourn to, uh...